Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Franklin?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Davidson is excused. Alderman Mills is excused. Mayor Bowman?
Present. Thank you. We do have a forum, and we have some celebratory matters this evening. First of all, I want to welcome Uwe Lawson with MPUA. He has an award for our electric departments. I'm going to invite him up. And Andy, you want to go ahead and come up with him? And bring this good-looking crew? We were just commenting about how young you all look, and we like that because that means you're going to be here for a while.
I know.
All right. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Uwe Lawson. I'm the Chief Association and Development Officer for the Missouri Public Utility Alliance. And I'm here today on behalf of that alliance to represent and pass on congratulations and good wishes to more than 120 of Harrisonville's fellow hometown utilities, most of them in Missouri, but also several in Arkansas and Illinois. First, I want to say just a little bit about hometown utilities and their importance, and then I'm going to mention the award that I have here tonight. Years ago, Harrisonville citizens and leaders committed to the long-term benefit of the community by making Harrisonville what we call a public power community. The benefits of public power are easy and quickly to tell about, but their impact is huge. And let me mention just three of those biggest benefits. They are local control, affordable costs, and reliability, and that's what I'm here about tonight. Local control, a little bit about local control. Public power simply means a community owns its own electric system. And like public schools and libraries, public power utilities are owned by the community, and citizens have a direct voice in utility decisions and policymaking. Business is conducted in the open. There is no other utility like a hometown utility because they're run under the public -- or the open records laws, and all activities, even those decisions in boardrooms, are made in open meetings for the public. Your community electric utility is creating jobs for the community. It makes money, and it also goes -- that money goes back into the community, not into the pockets of corporate executives or shareholders. And since ownership is local, service is local too. Office staff, customer service representatives, field crews, and our local residents, and they're able to provide the most reliable responsive service. On the point of affordable costs, that's also something that comes along with local control. Rates are paid by residents. Businesses and industry are determined by the local utility and local citizens and directed by the Board, like you. And it's not something that's decided in Kansas, or Chicago, or even Canada for some utilities. The end result of that is, over the long term and on a national average, public power rates are lower than those of other utility companies. So local not-for-profit utilities have the power to put their neighbors first, keeping energy costs affordable and serves every community's long-term needs. And that's what public power is about. And then lastly, and that's what I'm here tonight about, is about reliability. Putting it simply, customers of public power utilities have less outages than others. And what I mean by that is an investor-owned utility in Missouri, specifically, an investor-owned utility has outages of, on average, on the year of about two -- a little over two hours is what it takes that customers have outages on that. In Missouri, a municipal-owned hometown utility is roughly at an hour. In Harrisonville, it's a little over half an hour. So you have, and that's why I'm here tonight, is the American Public Power Association is offering a certificate of excellence and reliability to the citizens and the city and the staff here behind me of Harrisonville and the good work that you're doing. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that you also have a designation called an RP-3 designation. Again, reliable public power is that designation. And that is a designation that Harrisonville is only among about 275 utilities out of 2,000 across the country that have that designation. And on top of being awarded the RP-3, Harrisonville is an even more elite class than that. The utility has achieved a platinum-level designation, and only about the top 10% of those utilities that are recognized have this standing, and only 10 of those utilities are like it in Missouri. So you're doing great work here, and we just wanted to recognize that. And it's not an easy feat to do this. And the gentlemen behind me, and the folks behind me, and you on the Board deserve some recognition for doing that. So congratulations, and I have this little plaque for you tonight.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for having me.
Thank you for being here. We accept it, and we're just thrilled. Thank you. This is your award. This is not Andy's. It's not ours. It's yours. And you heard the gentleman talking about what it takes to receive something like this. So we commend you, and we appreciate what you do for the citizens of Harrisonville. Absolutely. Board?
Yes.
So right on the heels of this award, I want to invite you to come up here with Brent. Tonight, we want to honor Brent Stockstill for 25 years of service to the citizens of Harrisonville. I've been up here before. We've done this before. We've done this before, but not for 25 years. I'm going to give you the opportunity to talk about this man.
Well, I'm blessed to have him on my staff. I came here a little over two years ago, and Brent and I sat down. We went through things on how he and I both saw things. And the funny thing is, we're from two different parts of the country, but we both had the same vision for this utility. And we continue to try and do better every day. We've increased our staff level. We've done away with some personnel, but we've also kept the people that fit. And Brent's an awesome leader. We do butt heads from time to time, but I think that's normal. If we didn't, that would worry me. He's not a follower. He's a true leader, and the staff behind him can prove that he knows exactly what he's doing when he's called upon.
I'm going to give your workers behind you the opportunity to make a comment about this guy. I'll just pass the microphone. Anything you'd like to say about or to Brent? I'm going to give you the opportunity.
He's definitely been a great boss, and I've been thankful to have him to learn from the last few years.
I was going to say, I came here, what, four or five years ago, and I came from actually another utility. And the leadership wasn't so great there. And I came here, and Brent took me under his wing, and it's been great. I've learned a ton, and it's made me become a better person as far as leading these guys, helping these guys, and being a better worker, you know, in general. So I appreciate it, man. I really do.
These past eight months, I've definitely learned a lot more from Brent than I have anybody else. So Brent definitely is one heck of a leader, and I'm glad to be under him, so.
I've only been here for a little over six months, and I've worked at two different places. So it's nice to have a leader that can lead everybody. Everybody's on the same page. I've learned a good standard. Everybody works the same here, and we all get along, and it's really good just to have a leader leading all of us together, and it just works out really well.
I'd have to say it's been nice to have somebody that was going to be willing to step up and lead us, and somebody that wanted to bring a crew together that was going to work well together. Never been somewhere where a boss actually cares and has your back like Brent does, to be honest, and it's a nice relief to get to work under somebody that you trust.
It was nice coming back off the road to crews that I didn't like so much, to finally find a family and enjoy work every day, coming into work. So that was nice, to have Brent make me like line work again. So that was nice.
There you go.
Well, these guys make me look good. So I've got a great crew of guys, hard workers, always there when you need them, super reliable and willing to learn. And, you know, you guys make my job easy, so thank you for that.
Anything else you want to add to that? You know, that's what leadership is all about, is being able to come together. And I love your term about it's a family, because it really is, particularly in the nature of what you guys do, where you're depending on each other from a safety perspective and from a knowledge perspective. So I just can't commend Andy and Brent for their leadership that they bring to this department. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Madam Mayor. Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I'll let them take their picture first.
I've just had one comment about Brent, and he's almost like a magician, because he came out to my house about a year ago to find an underground line for me, and one of their high-tech, you know, thousands of hours piece of equipment wasn't working to find the underground line. So he goes to his truck, and he pulls out a piece of wire and uses it as a divining rod and locates exactly where that wire is underground. So, thanks. You do a great job.
Oh, okay. Well, come on up here. Carl, you want to come join us? Come on. Absolutely. Absolutely. So you've heard a lot about leadership tonight, and I think we are so fortunate as a city and as a Board to have employees that are leaders. And this is another one of them right here. I've watched this young lady come and develop from the time that she worked for Rodney in the Streets Department until she's moved up to working with Carl in an administrative capacity for Public Works. I was in a meeting last week, a planning meeting for the proposed TDD for the sports complex, and I was amazed at the level of knowledge and experience that the department has brought to that discussion, and Cassie was one of those. Hearing her talk about recommendations for the sports complex from a basis of knowledge was very impressive. I was very honored to know that she's one of ours. So Cassie, I'm going to pass this microphone to Carl and to Rodney. I'll let you do it first, actually. Rodney?
Well, I'd like to echo the mayor's sentiment on Cassandra. She's definitely a leader. She is. She's very knowledgeable. She has beloved Public Works, and she has a real gung-ho spirit. I appreciate it.
It doesn't surprise me that she's late. I mean, almost every night back at Public Works Admin, I have to tell her to go home. Go home, Cassie. It's time for you to go home. But she brings a skill set that I think is kind of unique, and she has a lot of positive values in that. And for the last two years, I've watched her kind of lead the stream cleanup. She coordinates with South Grand River Watershed Alliance and the Park Department, but, you know, she's kind of the woman behind the scenes, leading the effort. She's a great help with our MS4 program, you know, locating our outfalls and our stormwater junction boxes. And recently, she's been great in helping me and Rodney write grants, especially when you've just got to sit there at the keyboard and type in the answers to these questions that really don't make a whole lot of sense, but you just kind of wing it. And she can type out the answers. But maybe I should let Rodney tell this rest, this other story, if you wouldn't mind sharing, about Cassie's first experience in Public Works.
No, I'm not going to share.
You're not going to share that? Okay. If you're going to share, I'm not going to share.
But Cassandra does have all the qualities that makes a good Public Works person. She has a love for it. She has the ability for it, smart, and there's a lot of interchange, right? And that's what we need. She is a face, a new face of Harrisonville.
Excellent. Well, congratulations on 10 years of service for the city. I hope to be here to present many more awards for your service to the city. We're very honored to have you with us. Congratulations. Oh, good.
Good evening, Mayor. Wondering if I could just interrupt a little bit? I know you guys've got a busy agenda tonight, but we are happy to introduce our new investigations Lieutenant. She started with us last Monday, was sworn in. She is a 27-year veteran in the Kansas City and Missouri Police Department. We're super excited to have her. Her name is Darla Harris, and she has got a gamut of different fields that she's worked in. Let's just say a little bit about yourself.
Hi, thank you for having me this evening.
Push the button on the microphone so it turns green. That way Alderman Zaring, who's attending by Zoom, can hear you.
Okay. Like you said, I retired from the Kansas City and Missouri Police Department after a little over 27 years of service. I grew up in Cass County, so I'm really excited to be back. I'm married with an adult child, and I just want to say I'm very excited to be a part of this community. The whole process of interviewing and meeting the people in the community that I've been blessed already to meet, I just am very excited to be here and serve this community.
Thank you. We are thrilled. You know, we are thrilled that the command staff is now full again. We've got Lieutenant Chance out there holding up the door, and now we have Lieutenant Harris and Chief Hofer. And so congratulations to all three of you, and thank all three of you for your service to the citizens of Harrisonville, and welcome, Lieutenant Harris.
Thank you.
You bet.
Lieutenant Sheen said that she should get up here and tell that she's going to straighten those guys out. This morning, we were out at the hospital for a drill and exercise, and I showed up. I happened to have a red shirt on. She goes, "We match. You need to go on the chair."
We are going to really enjoy having you. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. What a fun opening to a fun evening. All right, we're going to move on then. Mr. Ratliff, did you have any agenda request forms submitted by the public this week?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes, and I'd like to ask you all to please silence your cell phones and the audio on your laptops if you haven't already done so. The first item are the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 1st, 2022. Those were available to you in your packet. If you've had a chance to read them, and there are no corrections, I will entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve. I second. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. Then the minutes of the work session of August 1st, again, those were available to you in your packet. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Say.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. Moving on to the agenda items. First is Council Bill 54.
Council Bill 54 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen and City of Harrisonville establishing and authorizing an incentive pay policy for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Ratliff, you're going to talk to us about that?
Yes. As you all recall from the meeting, that you wanted to create an incentive policy for fire and police personnel. Staff worked with Mr. Mauer's office as well as Bukaty's office to come up with the policy that you see that meets the criteria that you all requested. Once you all approve that tonight, will we implement that policy and moving forward from this point on?
And you've had the policy in your packet. Any questions about the policy for Mr. Ratliff or Mr. Mauer? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve. I'll second. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Alderman Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 54 is approved and becomes Resolution R.2022-33. Council Bill 55?
Council Bill 55 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the foredescribed property for public parks for a total tax levy of .6440. First reading, Council Bill 055.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you tonight is the tax levy that must be passed by September 1st of each year to basically keep our tax levy at a level amount of income. Staff reviewed this. It is an issue that's passed down from the State Auditor's office, and so it's kind of a pass-through formality to set that. And we have checked, and the ordinance does match the paperwork this year. And I would remind you that this is a public hearing item. I would entertain any questions.
At this point, I would invite any members of the audience that wish to address the Board about this council bill to please step forward to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. You may proceed.
Ready for a second reading?
Any questions from the Board? It is an ordinance.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move Council Bill 55 to a second reading.
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 55 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Alderman Davidson are excused.
Second reading.
Council Bill 055 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the foredescribed properties for public parks for a total tax levy of .6440. Second reading, Council Bill 055.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 55 is approved and becomes ordinance 3595. Council Bill 56?
Council Bill 56 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending the Harrisonville Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Services. First reading, Council Bill 056.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Would anyone like a hard copy?
Good, thanks, Chris.
Okay. So tonight, we're back to hopefully approve the ordinance. We've kind of gone over all of this at the last work session. This is all regarding residential solid waste management and collection undertaken by the city. If you have any questions?
Any questions from any members of the Board? Seeing no questions, this is an ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading.
Second.
Check.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 56 and take it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Alderman Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 54 is approved and becomes Resolution R.2022-33. Council Bill 55?
Council Bill 55 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the foredescribed property for public parks for a total tax levy of .6440. First reading, Council Bill 055.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you tonight is the tax levy that must be passed by September 1st of each year to basically keep our tax levy at a level amount of income. Staff reviewed this. It is an issue that's passed down from the State Auditor's office, and so it's kind of a pass-through formality to set that. And we have checked, and the ordinance does match the paperwork this year. And I would remind you that this is a public hearing item. I would entertain any questions.
At this point, I would invite any members of the audience that wish to address the Board about this council bill to please step forward to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. You may proceed.
Ready for a second reading?
Any questions from the Board? It is an ordinance.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move Council Bill 55 to a second reading.
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 55 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Alderman Davidson are excused.
Second reading.
Council Bill 055 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the foredescribed properties for public parks for a total tax levy of .6440. Second reading, Council Bill 055.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 55 is approved and becomes ordinance 3595. Council Bill 56?
Council Bill 56 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending the Harrisonville Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Services. First reading, Council Bill 056.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Would anyone like a hard copy?
Good, thanks, Chris.
Okay. So tonight, we're back to hopefully approve the ordinance. We've kind of gone over all of this at the last work session. This is all regarding residential solid waste management and collection undertaken by the city. If you have any questions?
Any questions from any members of the Board? Seeing no questions, this is an ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading.
Second.
Check.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 56 and take it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 056 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending the Harrisville Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Services. Second reading, Council Bill 056.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 56 is approved and becomes Ordinance 3596. Council Bill 57.
Council Bill 057 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing the Community Development Department Grant Program. First reading, Council Bill 057.
Chris?
Once again, does anybody want a... There's quite a bit in here. I've got some if you'd like. All right, once again, we're back returning to hopefully finalize this program. At our last meeting, if you would take a look at the basic outline, just a couple of highlights of things that we finalized. Grant applications will be accepted from the 1st of the year through the end of September or until our funding for next year is exhausted. Maximum grant dollar amounts would be 25% of project costs with a max grant amount of $2,500, no matter what the project total costs are. For the commercial side, it would be 25% or a max of $1,000. The final split of funds was 75% for residential, single-family, and duplex applications, and 25% for commercial properties. Properties appraised market value on the residential side cannot exceed $140,000 based on the assessor's website, and that 140 is for the 2023 tax year. There is a limit of one grant per property every five years with the provision that our five-member board can override that if the need arises. So, we will be able to look at multiple applications within that five-year period. Some people may only be able to do a very small project each year, and we didn't want to lock ourselves out from being able to help somebody more than once in five years. Again, funding, total funding, will be set up by you guys in the fall during budget work, and this will happen on a yearly basis. The only thing we changed on eligible residential improvements was to do away with additions like we talked about, and so that slot was taken by fascia repair and soffit repair on the exterior. We did add a provision for recipients and grant applicants that will be certifying the accuracy and truth of everything they put on the applications and the paperwork, and it can be subject to legal action if somebody's trying to pull a scam on us in any way. Our hypothetical funding model has not changed at all. Currently, we're having a fairly good year in my department and division, and we're about $100,000 over in excess revenue, code enforcement, abatement, expense recouping, and some budget savings. So, we're set up pretty good if you guys in the fall decide that we want to fund this program through carryover of those revenues and monies. The program guide hasn't changed much at all. A couple of the items that we've already talked about were corrected or changed in it, but the basic handout information will pretty much stay the same. We have finished up the application forms, so they're included in the packet tonight, too. There's a two-page residential application form, and it includes the waiting items that we'll be using. It's kind of a check-the-box type of thing. The items we feel that we may need a little bit of verification, we'll request that from applicants. So, there are seven different items that will basically add a point to your application process, and so we'll be looking hard at those. There is also a statement on Page 2 of any previous participation and what year it happened. And then a one-page application on the commercial side for either dumpster enclosures or non-conforming sign structure removal. And last but not least is the ordinance that Mr. Mauer in his form put together for us. It's a long one, kind of, but it covers everything and kind of really spells out the program really well. Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
We get paid by the word.
It's pretty much what we talked about at the last work session with the few changes we've made, and anything on it?
Absolutely. Thanks, Chris, for putting all the time and effort that you all did into this and give us all this information, because it's...
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman, for mentioning that, because we know that you've worked hard on this, and it's nice to be able to provide this tool, because it will certainly help us improve the appearance of the city. Alderman Dorhoff?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great program. Did we stipulate in here that they can only apply for this and not both this and the Chapter 353 if we do that, when there are...
We have not stipulated that. I don't think we're going to get the same applicants. I think that the 353 is going to attract people that have the funding to take advantage of the 353, and I think this is going to... This is for the small people, I think.
We can always put that in the other...
Any other questions of the Board? Alderman Dorhoff, do you want to see that inserted in?
I just thought I remember I was talking about that, so people weren't double-dipping in case it did come up as an issue.
And I would think that the Boards that oversee these programs would be able to question the applicant and advise the applicant that they could not apply for both.
Let me put it in the 353.
And we can put that in the 353 when we develop it, so... Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments from the Board for Chris Arthur? I'm just, I'm really pleased that we are providing tools for our city to be able to improve the appearance of the city. All right, this is an ordinance, Board.
Make a motion to take it to second reading?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
The motion is from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 57 and move it to its second reading. May I have a roll call?
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 057 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing the Community Development Department Grant Program. Second reading, Council Bill 057.
And another roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring. Alderman Zerring.
I was trying to mute. Now, Mike.
Alderman Zerring. Alderman Mills and Alderman Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 57 is approved.
There he is.
A little humor there. Council Bill 57 is approved and becomes Ordinance 3597. Thank you, Chris. Council Bill 58.
Council Bill 058 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending the Harrisville Municipal Code Regarding Outside Ambulance and Emergency Medical Services. First reading, Council Bill 058.
Fire Marshal Myler, good evening.
Can you give you a little bit of background story on this? Because it doesn't really state in there. This is an ordinance that basically was put in place whenever we took out the hospital contract. It didn't allow for any ambulance service to come in and take emergency services away from the city at that time. What this ordinance changes, we're requesting, is basically states that we were approached by American Medical Response, which is AMR, about they're going to start providing services to the hospital for non-emergency transfers, and basically what it is, is that they would have to, if we did not change this ordinance to allow them to come into the city for non-emergency services, they would have to call us every time the hospital requests them to do a transfer. So, staffs recommend to change it to where it will allow private services to come into the city and take non-emergency ambulances from the hospital only currently.
Okay.
It does not cover the emergency response or any emergency responses from the hospital.
Okay.
Like I said, there's really nothing else I add. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
So, just a little precursor for this item. As you know, we continue to have an issue with the hospital calling our ambulance out for what is a questionable emergency, but it clears out their bed space. It helps them, and should have been or could have been done by AMR just for their convenience. Then, we're going to propose to you a fee schedule that if... Because what we don't want to have the situation is where AMR's been hired to do it, and they're going to get paid by CRMC, but if we call HES or Harrisville Fire, they'll, we'll get it for free. Obviously, we don't want to create that scenario, and so we're trying to end this situation where CRMC can call us for free service, and if it's quicker, it's easier, it's more convenient. So, just as a precursor foreshadowing where we're headed, this won't fix the problem that we have, but it'll help, and it's the next step. And what we're hoping to end up with is the relationship between CRMC and whoever it chooses to provide those types of transports, and just let them do it, and it not be part of the things that they call us for. So, I just wanted to share that, that there is something there, because Rusty in his memo made clear this is not, you know, the whole answer to the problem, but this is where we think we're headed, so... And I'd be happy to answer any questions for what he has on that. I just didn't want you to think that this is the end of the issue, because it's not. It's just a step.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mauer. Questions of either Mr. Myler or Mr. Mauer?
I did ask Chief Sullivan, and just a month of this past month of July, there were 30 times where our ambulance was called to do these type of transports that they were calling emergent.
That has been a chronic problem, a chronic problem, and it's time to end it. Any other questions, comments? All right, this is our last ordinance of the evening.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Reese to suspend the rule on Council Bill 58 and advance it to its second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Davidson are excused.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 58 is in ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending Harrisville Municipal Code Regarding Outside Ambulance and Emergency Medical Services. Second reading, Council Bill 058.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson and Mills are excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 58 is approved and becomes Ordinance 3598. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Steve.
You bet.
Alderman, committee reports. Alderman Turner.
Nothing.
Okay. Alderman Milner?
I have nothing.
Alderman Zerring?
Yes, just a, you know, a lot of good things going on tonight. Wish I could have been there. Good to see that we're getting our police department staffed up. Good to see that our electric people are getting some recognition, I think some due recognition. Do a great job out here. Lot of good things going on, so just want to, again, thank the staff, thank Chris. I know he's been thanked already, but give him more thanks for all the work that he has put in on, really, all that he does, so that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Franklin?
Okay, wanted to let everyone know that the pool heater that is for the indoor pool at the community center is in the process of being taken out and revamped, and there are four units to this one, whereas before there was only one. So, if one unit goes under, then there are still three more that are capable of doing the job that needs to be done. There will be no hot water on Thursday and Friday of this week. Both saunas are going to be put in and installed this Friday as well. The slide pad will also be installed, and Grant had ordered a gym curtain, and it has arrived, and it will be installed at some point later on this week or possibly next. There will be a doggy dive that is going to be done, and it looks like it will be done Wednesday, September 7th. It will be held out for the public, and it's $5 a dog, and all the proceeds will be going to purchase shading for the dog park for the entrance. And I also wanted to say kudos to Andy and the electric department as well. I have sent him pictures, and we've talked on the phone, and he's always very helpful, and they seem to get the job done rather quickly, and it's nice to know that you have that kind of a relationship with the different departments in the city. And I also wanted to thank Chief Hofer. I had a situation last week where I really didn't know what to do, and I called him up, and he offered some advice, and they might not be able to do what you think should be done, but he offers advice, and he offers another way to help you out in a circumstance that you may not have thought about, so for that, I appreciate it, and I think that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Dorhoff?
I think all of our departments are doing a fantastic job, and it's great to see the recognition that they so much deserve, so just great job. Keep it up.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. All right, Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, ma'am. Just a reminder that tomorrow, not tomorrow, September 16th, staff will be from 11:00 to 1:00 in-staff training, and City Hall will be closed during that time. It's supposed to be tomorrow, isn't it? And then Fall Citywide Clean Up will be held September 17th, and then brush drop-off at the 24th. New business license software has been launched this week, just like anytime you launch anything new with technology, there's always hiccups along the way. Staff are working through those. If anyone says anything to you, we are aware of it, and we are working through those issues, so just wanted to keep you all up to date with that. The Muddy, the South Street, Missouri 2, Muddy Creek Contributary Project, 90% of the drawings has been completed. August 18th is when that will be scheduled for that coordination at 1:00. The Muddy Creek Regional Detention Stormwater is, has poured in concrete cradles and started laying 40-inch pipe. Some of you might have seen last week in the weekly report, the pictures that came out, and that's, the project's really moving along nicely and getting done quickly. The Royal Street Extension TDD project, that has been on a fast pace, a lot of meetings. The mayor got, had stuck into one of those meetings with us.
Oh, I was thrilled. I was so impressed.
The staff will be meeting with the TDD Board on the 24th of this month, and so we'll get additional direction, hopefully from the TDD group. Hopefully, there is a, hopefully, there is a positive, as we feel about it. The Lake Harrisville Intake Stretcher Project is continuing to move forward on the geotechnical topsail and boreings. City staff plan to bid that project on the 23rd of this month, and then the Halsey James Street project contractor nearing complete, one of the things that we had told them they had to be complete by the time school started, and so that's on schedule to be done in time of school. Then, we want to give a thank you and kudos to the City of Gallatin, who donated to the City of Harrisville at no charge, 500 water meter and an Itron ERT. I know you're all probably like, "I have no idea what you're talking about." If you really want to know details of it, Carl would love to go through the detail with you, but this was a really generous donation of up to $20,000 type of donation to the City of Harrisville, so we want to thank the City of Gallatin. Also, to let you know, the police department is seeing a lot of activity, a lot of calls. The call volume's been so high that even the chief's having to respond to calls, and so we're seeing a lot more activity, and for this next year budget, probably a lot more need. more need in a lot of these security measures that are going on around, not just Harrisonville, but all over the country. Of the 100 no utility connection fee permits, so those residential permits that you all did, there are 174 of them have been issued, and so that's a really great thing, considering that it's went fairly quick since the time that this started. Then to give you an update on the rental-ready program that's been implemented, so far, they've had about eight landlords that have come in and got their business license, about 51 units would be a result of that. Staff figure there's about 150 landlords in the city. We are, as a first-year implementation, trying to work with everybody, not being sticklers, but just continually to inform. This week, Community Development is sending out letters reminding them that the business licenses are due on September the 1st, and we'll continue to work with them in trying to get this data software set up with the information that we need and that we can work with the landlords to get that accomplished. So just want to let you all know where we're at with that. It is implemented. September 1st is the deadline, but we are working with people, and we're trying to work and educate as we go in through this process. The new Dollar General store on East Mechanic, the building permit has been issued, so you're probably getting Dennis a lot of Facebook stuff on that, that there's a fourth Dollar General. There's not a fourth Dollar General. It's the same one that's there in the Southland Strip Center there, and it's going to build a new site there at that location. So to end this, as you all know, we have budget coming up, and it feels like we do budget all the time, but Ben Hart is on with us. He had planned to be here with us tonight, but he got himself quarantined, and so he's going to go over this with you tonight in these slides. So Ben, take it away.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, great. So what I wanted to do is two things tonight. Really, can I go over the budget calendar real quick, and then also talk a little bit about, or remind, I guess, everybody, including the directors, what the goals and priorities were decided back in April. The calendar you got in front of you is kind of a little bit of an early one, but what we've got is the solid lines, the first one being the far left today, tax level hearing, and then if you look down the timeline a little bit, there's a budget presentation on October 3rd is what we're proposing, to go ahead and discuss changes, have that be our first budget session, and so you guys, remember what we'll do is any changes will be documented in one page, and then the departments kind of get up and go through those changes and to talk about them and any other questions you might have. So we've got October 3rd and October 17th as the two budget workshops. If we needed to have another one, we could do a special session. Gives us plenty of time. With the first reading, November 7th, and then the second reading, December 5th. Even though we've got MML 11th to the 14th, and then I was going to have that presentation to you on September, the second meeting in September, and that would have been September 9th, but I will be gone on vacation. I mean, the first one I've taken in three years, but they forced me to take one, so that's the reason we're moving back a little bit to October 3rd. We still should be on target, and we'll continue to produce the financial statements that you guys see on a regular basis. That's the overall budget calendar. Jeremy, want to go straight to the back? Right there. So you might remember this chart that David put together up at the top, the half moon, really the goals that the board set, and what part of the budget calendars, having departments fill out their budgets and put it into ENCODE industrial system and aim that budget in any new or additional monies that they're looking for, aim those budgets at certain goals and priorities, priorities being the red, the red marks, red items, and then the goals being 1 through 8 on the chart you see. So if that's what, if that is still what you guys are looking at, as far as goals, that's the direction we'll head. As you saw, Jeremy did the tax hearing this year. Kim has been working on the forecast and has been correcting me every step of the way, but she's done a fantastic job picking up sales tax forecasts, so you'll see more of each of them as we progress down this budget path. So that's all I've got for you today.
Any questions that the board has for Ben?
Thank you, Ben. Hope you get to feeling better.
You're welcome. Good, ma'am.
You know, isn't it amazing that it's almost Labor Day, and it's almost time to talk budget? Where has the year gone? Under my comments for the evening, I'd like for you to make the adjustment to your calendar that our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 6th, because Monday is Labor Day, so we won't be here Monday night. And then I also want to thank the board for the incentive policy that you developed and approved for the police department and the fire department. Chief Hofer, I'm hoping that that helps you recruit those additional officers that you need, and I want to thank the board for being proactive in developing that and passing that for our fire department and our police department. That's all I have, board. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry? I apologize. I overlooked you tonight. Please forgive me. No questions from the media. I'll make it up to you, I promise. All right, board, now I'll take that motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn?
The motion is from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Good night. You want to take a quick break, and then we'll come back for work session? Or do you need...